Good evening, everyone. Let's welcome you to the Planning and Zoning Board. If I ever ask everyone to stand in place, they should fight.
At my place.
The flag of the United States of America and to every profit for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All of those of this meeting, we show that the open call of meeting act has been given by the clerk in the following matter, folks on the board before it in the Borough Clerk office, email the retrospect and the carrier post. The next order of business is swearing in of new members.
Okay, Madam Chairman, we have three members tonight. John, Renee, Deborah Gushen, and Keith Lee.
Ken.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And Al is not here tonight, so we'll carry his swearing up until next. Folks, would you stand up? Please raise your right hand. And then when I say aye, you're going to repeat your name and just repeat it verbatim. Aye?
Aye.
I am clear.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the State of New Jersey?
And of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear?
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance to the same.
True faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will perform?
That I will perform.
All the duties?
All the duties?
Of the office of a member?
Of the office of a member.
Of the Planning and Zoning Board?
Planning and zoning.
To the Borough of Runnymede?
Borough of Runnymede.
Do the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
We may have one more.
Chairwoman Cleahan.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Here.
Ms. Gushen, here. Mr. Pachowski.
Excused. Mr. Melz, excused.
Mr. Operle.
Here.
Mr. Laverde had a defense.
Excused.
Mayor Fass.
Here.
Mr. Renee.
Here.
Mr. Oz, excused.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Royan.
Here.
And Mr. Bach.
Here.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I always take it from my first one to be here. Mr. Knight.
Mr. Knight. Thank you. Sure. Okay, the next floor of business is nominations for chairperson. We'll open up the, Mr. Royan, do your job.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Folks, we would like to hear nominations for the position of chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Board for 2020. Do I hear any nominations?
I nominate Ken Cleehan.
Second.
Second. Do we hear any other nominations?
Can we get a full year appointment?
About six.
Shut up.
How about six? Six, please. Make for life.
Oh, wait.
She's running.
How lucky can I get?
Can I have a motion to close nominations for chairperson?
I make a motion.
Second. Joyce, can we take a roll call? Load pointer.
Wait a second, you can't. This is Cleahan.
Outstanding.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen, yes. Mr. Operle.
Yes.
Mr. Renee.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor Fass.
Yes.
All right, congratulations.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to take a moment to thank all the members of our board, my board. You make it easy for me to do this job. You show up, you pay attention, you get things done. I'm never worried that I don't have a forum, I'm never worried that I don't have an educated board sitting up here making decisions for the people of our town. And that's important to me because we're all volunteers up here. No one up here gets paid. We're all up here because we love running and we want to do the right thing. So I want to thank you all for diligence. I know it's your time when I'm emailing you and asking questions and when I'm calling you folks and getting opinions and trying to put things together. I know I'm taking up time from your families and I'm taking up time from your life. And I appreciate everything you do. I believe in the component of you're only as good as the people that you surround yourself with. And that is most definitely a case here where I'm only as good as all of you around me. So I especially, including our professionals, you folks take my calls. I know I call you eight o'clock at night, I know I call you at seven thirty in the morning sometimes because that's when I have the time. I have the hour a week job, you know, that requires my time. And you folks as professionals are always courteous to take my calls, answer my questions because I want to do the right thing for the town and I want the right opinions and the right answers. You guys always do what you can to give it to me. And you make my life worthwhile up here. And I've been up here a long, long time. And it's important to me. It's not like a, I don't take it casually, I take it seriously. And I think through that, so thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Your work. So with that, we're going to entertain nominations for vice chairperson. I would like to nominate Joseph Operle.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for vice chairperson?
Motion to close.
All right, motion to close.
I'll second.
Second. Roll call, please. Mr. Operle.
That's a yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Operle.
Outstanding.
Mr. Renee?
Yes.
And Mayor Fass?
Yes.
Thank you. The next nomination I would like to open up would be for second vice chairperson. I would like to nominate Deborah Gushen.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for vice chairperson?
Motion to close.
I'll second.
Mr. White and Mr. Renee. We have roll call, please.
Chairwoman Cleahan.
Ms. Gushen.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Outstanding.
Mr. Operle?
Yes.
Mr. Renee?
Yes.
And Mayor Fass?
Yes.
Next resolution we have would be providing for the appointment of solicitor for 2020. I would like to nominate Mr. David Royan, who is with the firm of Royan Karlmir.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations for appointment of solicitor? We did not, we did not receive any other bids just for our application, so with that roll call.
But Mayor, excuse me, Chairwoman Cleahan.
Ms. Royan.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Operle?
Yes.
Mr. Renee?
Yes.
And Mayor Fass?
Yes.
Thanks, folks, for considering the firm again. And I think we've got a good team here. Hopefully a lot of good things happen this year.
Yeah, we're hoping to have some, have some action, something going on for the, the next resolution 2005 would be a resolution providing for the appointment of engineer for 2020, I'm sorry, 2020. I'll put the name in of Bach Associates.
I'll second.
And I will also make note that there were no other RFPs proposed for that. Are there any other nominations or appointments?
Motion to close.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chairwoman Cleahan.
Mr. Bach and Associates.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Operle?
Yes.
Mr. Renee?
Yes.
And Mayor Fass?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and thank you for all your hard work and your team's work. We've, we've got a lot done this past 12 months. It's going to be our goal to try to let the town know how much we've accomplished in the past 12 months. It's not easy to get that, to get that out there. But just for everyone else's education, there's been a lot of, you know, different things happening between applying for grants and applying for redevelopment and applying for just all different stuff, tax abatement to try to help develop the town and help everyone make a better run of it. So this past year was probably the most activity we've had in a long time in, in trying to facilitate that and get, and get a layup on that. So we're really looking forward to hopefully getting the flowers of our planting this coming year and seeing something's happen, especially on the Black Forest White Fore. So I thank you and your team for all your talk. All right, the next resolution is providing for the equipment of a planning board secretary. I would like to nominate Joyce Penta, please.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for volunteers or people that don't have, poor Joyce, she's the best. Are there any other, are there any other people we would like to appoint? Okay.
Sit down under the desk.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Chairwoman Cleahan.
With pleasure.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Operle?
Yes.
Mr. Renee?
Yes.
And Mayor Fass?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Joyce. You do a wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
You do, you do a great job. You do a great job at every single thing you do, and we really appreciate you.
What was something I said?
Did a great job. She's another one. She takes all my phone calls. She takes all my emails, morning, noon, night, because I'm working and we're trying to get things done, we're trying to get things set up, and she's never not answered the call. So I truly appreciate that. And last but not least, we have a little resolution 20 dash 07 establishing our regular meeting dates and official newspapers. And Joyce, I will refer to you for a video on that.
Yes, well, our newspaper is, we don't have much of a choice, it's Courier Post, The Journal, The Record Breeze should not be in there to be a retrospect. Record Breeze is no longer in existence. And The Inquirer, that's even debatable, whether or not we're allowed to use The Inquirer or not. I don't know if they decided on that.
Right, with the, with the state or?
Well, whether you can advertise in a paper that's, you know, offices Philadelphia.
Any paper that serves that community that's in the general business.
It does, The Inquirer does, but we were, there were some, there were some issues with that.
Right.
Or we mandated to have two, is that?
You should have two, yeah.
So retrospect in the Courier is basically what we use for. And then this also includes our meeting dates, which is, I included in your packet tentatively, I didn't advertise that we had, starting with March. You have to note that the November meeting?
Pushed it back.
Well, the only reason you did it, it's not because of the convention, it's because the actual date's on Veterans Day.
Veterans Day. Joyce, Joyce called me and I thought it would be disrespectful to force people to come out on Veterans Day if they had other memorials to attend. So I thought it would be disrespectful, so I thought it wouldn't hurt anybody's feelings to go ahead and go from Wednesday to Thursday. So if anyone disagrees with my decision, it's?
I don't like Thursdays, I interfere with my hair and I hear you start that. That's the way it is.
You know what's funny is, you don't get to vote.
I did my, I did my, I did my, I was, I was.
But no, as soon as I saw that, I thought that was an issue.
Yeah, so that's, that's, anybody asked, that's why we're doing that. There's a problem with that, by all means, I'm one person, it was just a question that came up and we thought it would be proactive and respecting the veterans. So that is the resolution. Are there any questions or comments on that resolution?
That's where you go.
Do we have a motion on the floor to approve that resolution?
Do I want to make a motion?
I make a motion to, I make a motion approved. I'll second your motion.
We have roll call, please.
The dates, the dates?
Regular meeting dates and official newspapers.
20 dash.
Chairwoman Cleahan.
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Operle?
Yes.
Mr. Renee?
Yes.
And Mayor Fass?
Yes.
All right. There is a motion in order to approve the minutes of the 11/13/19 meeting. They are all found in the back of your packet. Anybody have any questions or comments or changes on these?
Make a motion, please.
Second.
All right, motion made in second, all favor?
Aye.
All right. I would like to just let everybody know, it's with a little bit of sadness and regret that Scott Pachowski and I spoke today, he is still having some very serious health problems. And as you all know, Scott hasn't been able to attack for quite some time. He's battling, battling, and he, he just got news of an older battle he has to, you know, come upon. So he asked me to, at this point in time, accept his resignation and appoint someone else to fill this position until such time as his health allows him to return to the Planning and Zoning Board. Scott has been a very loyal and, and just a charming fellow to have on the board for many, many years. And unfortunately, his health is failing him right now, and he needs to attend to that. So I, I did accept his resignation with regret this afternoon. So Mayor Fass and I will talk about that in, in next weeks to come. And hopefully, what we'll probably do, Mr. Royan, you correct me if I'm wrong, but what we would probably do, he was a class three or four?
Four.
Okay. And we'll have to find out when his appointment was up, and then we'll probably ascend one of the alternates to fill his, you know, the last bit of his.
Okay.
And then we'll find another.
I appreciate that. That should be a record of that one, Scott, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't think he was, I don't think he was reappointed recently, so I think he might have a year left on his appointment.
So then, yeah, then he'd be appointed in front of Scott's unexpired term.
Yeah.
Now, is he resigning, or is he taking a leave of absence?
No, he's going to resign. We want, we want him to concentrate on his health right for a second. He, he honestly, honest to goodness, as sick as he is, he calls me every single month and says, can I, what's going on, do I have to be there? He hasn't driven as far since Christmas.
Wow.
So he's, he's, he's going through it.
Yeah.
And he's, you know, he's doing the best he can. But I said to the time being, I said, you know, we'll just go ahead and get that off of your plate, because he doesn't need anything on his plate right now. And we'll ascend our senior alternate to his unexpired term. And then Mayor and I will talk about finding an alternate to swear in perhaps next month for, to have another alternate. And then, of course, whenever Scott is back to full health, he is welcome with open arms.
Right.
His term expires 12/31/22.
Okay.
Okay, so we have two years.
We have two years.
So we'll, we'll consult with the senior alternate.
So would that be settled for next month's meeting, swearing in or anything like that?
It would be, yeah, once Nick and I speak, I mean, they, they, they serve it next pleasure.
Right.
So once.
Our board.
That's, my board, your board, we're a team. But then once we decide that, and then the, I would think that the protocol would be to ascend to senior, senior alternate, swear up top. That's, that's, that's the right way. That's the right way to do it, my, my opinion.
Should I do another alternate?
Yep, correct.
We're going to. Sorry, I'll be retiring, so we'll have, and that's a specific, it has to be Borough of Runnymede.
That's what I was wondering.
So we do have a Borough employee who's going to be coming to all the meetings now. Maybe we make him just sit up at the table instead of having to sit in the audience. So we'll talk.
He's class two.
He's class two, a Borough representative. I mean, in the past, it's been a public works superintendent, it's been, it's been fired over the chief of yours for a while.
DM's going to work out just fine, I guarantee it.
You can help us move the meetings along.
I'm over, you guys move it along, huh?
You can't show up anything, show up.
Show up your volunteer. You know, you know me, you show up at my meeting, you're a volunteer.
If we're a record, I won't have any discrepancies with hair appointments right now.
Okay. There you go. So that, so that's all good news, and now that that's all squared away. Yeah, so, again, you know, think about it, give us a couple days, then if you definitely want to do it, we'll, we'll put it in the minutes for next month for you to be sworn in, if that's okay with you. And Karen. And Brian. All right, so we got that squared away. And so old business, we don't have anything necessarily with old business, I think we have to go over, anything with Piper Street?
No, the, just a report on La Quinta, they haven't even paid their property taxes.
Yeah.
I think Joyce?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand now. So that's really nothing to move on there. There are a few applications that should be coming in front of the boards soon. The new application is available, we got to get it online, but we've revamped the application a little bit cleaner, took away some of the stuff. I, I still think we need to tweak it even some more for different types of variances that are being requested, it's a home variance, you know.
Did we add the caveat as far as, we spoke about with the water runoff issue, did we add that?
Stormwater would have to be done still through a Borough ordinance. I think Mr. Bach sent over or something, but it's a new year, so we'd have to reintroduce.
You already have a stormwater plan, manager of the permit from the state, so anything that comes before your board is going to have to comply with that.
For the residential.
Yep, the state already has the definitions of what major development is, and then?
And Candy was removing, if it's a residential property, we have to, we have to first address impervious coverage and then any kind of runoff issues.
We were speaking about, we wanted to, about three months ago, we had an applicant coming in front of us, and his plan did not show where he was going to dispose of the water coming off of the new roof.
Because he was so close to the property.
Very close to the property line, and you and I spoke, and we said, we have to have to study.
Well, there's, there's two things that you have to look at. One is, under the New Jersey DEP regulations, a major development, something that disturbs more than an acre of ground or creates one quarter acre of new impervious, has a set of rules. And that, we have to do stormwater, quantity, quality productions, recharge of gravel and everything else. Anything underneath that technically does not have rules to it. So you have to weigh them against what belief they're asking for. So if they're coming in with a byright application, not exceeding, you know, your standards, and of course we have to look at the impervious coverage in town, so we have a standard for that.
And we currently do not have any.
Right, and that's the first thing they have to look at. But then, say for instance, you did come up with impervious standard of, say, 50% of the same that aren't Charlie, and someone comes in and they want to do 60%. Then you can put a condition on that, that they have to mitigate the increase over what's left.
So that would be the trick.
That's the trick.
So we have to create a trick.
Yes, you need, you need impervious coverage ordinance.
Well, we need to do that, our idea was that we want to do that and forewarn the client before they come in here and before they have to walk out, agreeing to paying for a $1,500 survey, study, whatever you want to call it, before we put the gavel down and say, we're going to approve this application.
The two items, if my memory serves, is that we were looking to introduce through Mayor and Council his law on impervious coverage ordinance and also a grading plan ordinance.
Correct.
If you're disturbing a certain, a lot of your surrounding communities have a, a standard, if you're disturbing 500 square feet or more, then you have to have a grading plan to strike.
That was a gentleman's problem, he didn't have a grading.
Correct. And so those things should be implemented by Mayor and Council.
It's going to be before the application even is submitted. They would be made aware of this, I think that was part of the argument.
That's what I did.
We want people to be aware prior to coming in front of the board what our requirements were. And Steve, you did send me something.
I'm pretty sure.
You did, you sent me something at the beginning of last year where we talked about this.
And I think, and then we just have to look at what would be appropriate impervious coverage is for the different zones.
Yeah, each zone should have its own.
Because I, I don't want folks coming in front of the board, you know, not prepared and then feeling intimidated to say that they agree to pay for this survey at $1,500 because they know, I'm not going to say, we're not going to say yes unless they do it. I don't, I don't want to intimidate anybody.
The, the, if the applicant is requesting relief and it is concern of the board that the variants could be exacerbated by what they're doing with their property and everything else, if it's a reasonable condition that you said that you have to prove that you're not going to be detrimental to your adjacent property owners. So that, that's a reasonable condition, those other boards do that. But I do believe it's important that Mayor and Council will consider, I'm looking at the Mayor and looking at the Council, to do the grading plan ordinance, so it's upfront, anything over 500 square feet, and to review the, even if you just send a letter, a resolution to the planning board and let them look at the impervious coverages for the different zones. But the planning board really shouldn't do it unless you guys are asking them to.
I agree. I mean, we, we were going to start it last year, but you, you know, our, our council says we can't necessarily bring an ordinance from one year into the next.
Right.
So last year, we didn't have, you know, we need time to get an ordinance together. You did send the over draft.
Yeah, but I would actually just refer that over to the planning board for them to make recommendations back to Mayor and Council. And then we'll look at it zone by zone, and it's like after one of the meetings, decide.
Let's do that, do that next caucus, and then we'll do it in March.
If you can't start it very much, you should give a.
Yeah, the impervious is definitely something we have to deal with. We ran into a few situations where people paid their entire front yard.
And you're allowed it.
And currently, you are allowed it. But I just have one question on the disturbance, so 500 square feet, now we're talking about impervious coverage. So obviously, an addition, parking, driveways?
Garage.
Garages, decks, patios?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm good.
Because I'm considering.
It's disturbance. So most grading ordinances are disturbance. So if someone goes and puts in an addition, they're going to have downsides and things like that. So it's, it's usually disturbance of a footprint. It's not.
It's above and beyond what's allowed.
Yeah, so it's not, the grading plan really isn't associated with what's impervious, it's what you were disturbing. So if someone goes and decides to grade their backyard 500 square feet that had never ran to a neighbor's property, but now is all running to the neighbor's property, that's that's where this would be revealed. And that's why if anybody's disturbing the property, disturbing is not just turning it over and planting a grassy, is changing, changing the pattern.
And that was the situation we had on Yvesham Road, the grating, I mean, the soil went into the pool.
Yeah, and, and I will tell you, I mean, when people put up a garage, right, you know, five feet off the property line, it changes the, it changes things that they have to make accommodations, or at least someone should be reviewing to make sure their accommodations remain, so they're not.
If it goes above the impervious coverage, right?
If this, your grading ordinance should be based on disturbance, not based on impervious.
Even if, even if it only covers a deck, if the hole is spaced between them, that's considered?
If, if you're just taking a, a deck and putting it in a yard, right?
No coverage.
Right, just putting it in a yard, you're not changing the ground cover or the ground condition underneath, or the grades of underneath, I believe that would not be grounds, that would not be the definition of disturbance.
Okay. But patio, that becomes impervious.
But if you do it with patio.
You know, there's people, I mean, I was at Hand Knights once, even at the meeting, where the gentleman did a patio in that driveway, and remember?
Right, but it has, it has to be, and we can work on what the definition of the disturbance is.
Okay, that's one thing we have to have a definition.
Yeah. We got, uh, let me say, you know, it's all, it's all fine, you know, once, you know, I live next to Nick, and we're friends, and he wants to do this and that. But then, when I move out, and if somebody else moves in, all of a sudden this stuff's flooding their yard, who approved this? I don't want to be in that seat where we approve that. I, I want to protect not only the resident that might not commit a complaint, that might not commit and have a concern about it, I want to protect the future resident that might buy that property, next to that property, getting the new building on it, to make sure that it's not going to have water or any.
That's where you're gonna get, if you, when you put your impervious ordinance in, also it's gonna be definition of what is impervious and what is not impervious. It's, it's real simple, impervious right now is an existing asphalt, concrete, stone currently is impervious. Existing stone is impervious, proposed stone, if it is, if it is like a red rock or something else like that, is not impervious. All right, pavers are impervious, impervious pavers are impervious. Right, except for the gaps between, and I just recently got a interpretation from DEP on decks. As long as they are, um, not coming groove, and as long as there's gaps in between and the soil underneath, they are now considered impervious, which is different than the interpretation we had just a few years ago, but exterior decks are not considered impervious. As long as you have the, so all this stuff has to be defined, and put your ordinance, so Keith has a rulebook.
Yes. Keith likes a lot of pages.
There's still. And he's got, but he's got the hardest job in town.
But that is something.
Well, it's only been ninety-four years, Keith, come on, ninety-four years.
Refer that over to the planning board, that the planning board has, has an exercise after a meeting, you know, as one of the workshop items. We can come up with those, those thoughts, and I'll bring some examples.
Okay.
That's easy. We don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Oh, but we want to, we want to prepare them when they come in here.
That should also be on our, our, our website, so they can, they come in here, they have the opportunity to review it on our site, if they didn't.
Well, I will tell you that you're gonna have to do some thinking on your impervious coverages per zone. You never have before, it's not like you're starting, you know, where you're starting at a thirty percent like everybody else was. You're, you're gonna have to really think about that one.
We got you to think, Steve.
What's this?
We got you to think.
Well, I think, you know, Steve has a great point of houses that were built some since the twenties, right? And, and forty foot lots, you know, it gets really tricky.
Well, they're existing and already, right?
Yeah, but see, once you disturb it, Mr. Knight will say that it is.
Once you add on to it.
It has to conform to the current ordinance. It's not resisting once you take it off. It causes a lot of problems.
We got a slippery slope here, Ron, and we gotta take care of it, we gotta throw some oil dry down. Throw some oil dry down on a slippery slope, but either, either, guess what, in my opinion, um, anything that we do is an improvement upon doing nothing. It's an improvement upon doing, we can always tweak it, massage it to every applicant as it comes in front of us, or it doesn't come in front of us, if it comes to Keith, we, at, at least if we, if we have some parameters to start with, we need something to start with, and, you know, we can always take it from there. And, and, uh, I just, I want to thank, little, little thing here, just for what Keith does. Uh, we had a fence issue come up about two weeks ago, and, um, it wasn't in accordance, and, and Keith went back out and re-measured, and it, it wasn't changing twenty-five percent of it, so the gentleman didn't need a, a variance, so kudos to you for going back out and trying to make it all work. Um, we, we try to make it work for the residents and the businesses in the town, and, you know, he took, he took a second look at it, and, um, everybody's happy, everybody's legal, it was done right, and I appreciate you taking the effort to take the second look at that for him.
Absolutely. It wasn't necessarily a second visitation, it just wasn't responsive.
Right, I understand that, yeah, well, that's, that's what I said, I said, it's so much easier to fix something before it goes to court than after it goes to court. I was telling councilmember Neary that, that he should have reached out sooner, and then we would have tried to get, you know, something resolved for him. But as we all know, things get put aside, especially with the holidays, and it just, it just never, it never came to fruition until he got noticed. But I appreciate you going back out and trying to formulate an amicable solution, rather than having a business owner in town go through something, and all this one would see happen, so I thank you for that.
It's one check you get, one check. Now we have to, only after the first one, the floor, and then we can make extra checks.
There you go.
Check, check, check. I'll show you after that, in the plus column.
That's right. Um, new business, I mean, again, like mayor said, we have some people that are, uh, yeah, talking about, uh, doing some, doing some stuff and making some, uh, changes. Uh, I don't know, Councilmember Mayor wants to report on the heart and soul, or, uh, Mr. Leaf wants to report on the heart and soul while we're here?
Sure, um, yeah, well, John, I can do it together, so we, as you know, we were finalists in the heart and soul competition, and we made it down to the final two. Uh, we had a very strong showing, uh, one of the things that I think was the highlight of the entire process was, um, oh, oh, sorry, you guys hearing me? Um, there were a couple of things that I think were highlights of the entire process. One was getting the community together to speak one to another, um, and also pulling up some suggestions on how we could create a universal calendar, and that's one of the things that John's working on. And, um, our little, our very small nonprofit that was about eight months old at the time, kind of got together and rallied, and we were able to put together a really nice, you know, nine-page narrative about the town, which I think was amazing.
I read eight pages, it was amazing.
It's really great.
Absolutely.
I said I'd love to, you know, give one to everyone in the town, so they can.
Can I put it on the website?
It is on the website, okay, we put it up on the website.
Very good.
So ultimately, we were not selected to be on this first cohort of town. So what the heart and soul community were trying to do was to find five towns in South Jersey that could all kind of work together. So we were, um, let's see, it was Winslow Township that was selected over us, and, um, we weren't really told exactly why. Uh, we do know that their town is much larger geographically than us, so that could be one of the, one of the reasons. But, um, we've had a good relationship with Woodbury, and Woodbury has continued to reach out to us and say, we want to work with you. So, uh, we're doing, we'll be doing some collaborative things.
Did Woodbury make it?
I think they came in sixth, outside of five, and we were seventh.
With two people on Friday.
They're trying to get additional funding from PSCNG, PSCNG maybe is putting up a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I don't think they put up two, but we're the next in line to get additional funding, we were seventh, we were seventh, which is okay. We did, we did actually, Winslow is a fifty-square-mile town.
Yeah.
And we are a two.
Two square miles, it's the largest.
A little over.
So, you know, we talked about diversity a lot as well, a little more diversity, they kept saying, uh, but we did our best, and we, we, we put on our, our best, uh, our best book board. You were there.
Yes.
Who was from Al, wasn't it? So it's gonna leave, no, it's not over, just because we didn't win that contest, there's gonna be many things that we've learned from, from that whole series of events. And that we're working on right now.
Yeah, we actually have a couple of really interesting projects that are happening right now. One of the ones that we did was, um, we sort of organized having the kids from both schools write a love letter to the town, and I got involved in having a, we're also gonna create some murals out of that, so I read the three hundred poems from the kids, which was pretty, uh, interesting, uh, enlightening. And I think, um, what was great is that they, um, you know, highlighted, you know, seeing the town through the eyes of the, I think was really enlightening also. To see the things that they thought.
Did you find their parents in those stories?
No.
Probably not, because it was a poem, it was a poem.
What was, what was the criteria of the poem?
So the criteria was, it was the basic idea of, uh, write a love poem to the town, what do you love about them? And, um, so some of the things that repeatedly came up were, um.
Those candy?
Yeah, like, not specific names, but it was the RYAA, uh, lots of restaurants, the Philly Diner, Marino's, Luigi's, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, Wawa had its own little sub town.
The millennials, wow.
That was amazing.
Locked up.
One, one kid actually wrote a whole poem just to Wawa. And that was a highlight of why he lived in one, because there was a Wawa.
We should submit that to Wawa.
We are actually, we're actually planning that, yeah, we're hoping that we can get a big grant from Wawa.
That's awesome.
This advertising piece, so it was really good.
That, that should be on the news.
Where was his favorite cheese sticks from, or what was that, somebody even specified cheese sticks from Marina.
Uh, I think.
Close enough.
Yeah, yeah, yes, there were three.
Was that on the website?
Yeah, we're gonna do more than that.
That's just so cool.
I think we'll put the winning, the poem in the newsletter.
Yeah, but I mean, just all the, all those, I mean, all those letters to run me, or put on the website, that would be so cool.
So all we ended up, we had not announced the, the winners, but I can tell you that the winners were selected, and, um, there was one, it was the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So there's a first, second, third, um, in each category, and, um, you know, I would like to see, um, the, the winning poems, actually, they could go on a wall. Maybe somewhere around here, because they're really.
We got a lot of good essays.
Yeah, they're really good, and I think that should.
Yeah.
And there was a wonderful, the other thing that all the kids loved was, um, Green Acres Park, that was mentioned a lot.
Beaver Ranch.
Yeah, but they all called it.
It's all Green Acres stuff.
Some called it Timber Creek stuff, but.
I didn't name it, and it's always Green Acres.
And what they, they said about it was, um, um, ways that they felt, um, like that they had this piece of, piece of nature that they could go to when they needed to be, like, communal.
Yeah.
That was great.
Absolutely.
And the other thing that, um, repeatedly, the kids said, said that they felt safe in this town.
Very good.
And I think that that might be compared to what they hear on the news about other towns, like, you know, environments and things like that, they did not say that. One kid specifically said, um, that he felt like he had, um, freedom and independence, even at a young age, to be out and play with his friends, and like, go out, and, you know, go out. Yeah.
Cause Captain Murray and our police department, they make it chill, we feel that way.
Yeah, they mentioned the police, yeah, they mentioned the cops, yeah, the how great the cops are, so, yeah.
Marked it. Okay, you wanna talk a little bit about, say, the next project, say, to reach the partner?
Yeah, so we were also approached by, um, St. Teresa's, um, and they.
Bullying.
They have a parking lot behind their schoolyard that, um, the cars park on for the Sunday services, but that is also the playground that the kids use.
Three hundred kids?
Yeah, during their regular school, school year. And, um, they've been experiencing some bullying issues there, because there's, yeah, there's nothing for the kids to do. So, um, they, they approached us for some help in designing, um, a mural for the playground that would include activities. So, um, I created a design for them, and we're going to be going forward with that, we're gonna, Reimagine Run Me is gonna be assisting them in realizing that, and our, I had a meeting again today with Danielle to kind of confirm when they need it by. And there's some big, uh, event that they're having on May the fifteenth, so.
Before, the one before.
That's, so it's done by May the fifteenth, so we'll be doing some.
Huge mural project, it's gonna help with, you know, anti-bullying, it's, it's for the kids in the town, it's just a great project. Everybody's gonna get behind it, and if you want to see the mural, what it's gonna look like, you can go on Reimagine Run Me, and it's posted on there, what we're gonna do.
And actually, they're, they've grown, their St. Teresa's is now, um, three-year-olds to eighth grade, I mean, it's, you know, I think, gosh, we approved that, that little pre-k trailer about six years ago, I guess, for Father Joe, I think it's about six years ago. They've had that little sunshine trailer on the, on the forward parking lot, facing Yvesham Road for some time, so they're, they're, you know, unfortunately, as we all know, a lot of, um, Catholic schools have closed in the area, and so they have benefited, if you want to say it, from that. So their census in that school in our community is growing, you know, so I can definitely see what will be a need for something like that. And, uh, yeah, you know, the Catholic school, that's all we had was a blacktop, that's all we had was a blacktop, kickball, dodgeball, tag is what we had, Catholic schools, jump rope, but that's awesome, very cool. Do we have anything else with old business to cover? I'm great, um. New business, uh, Joyce is writing these packets I need to open now that I don't know about, to have the key.
I don't think there are any applications there, it's just information, most of it is on that, uh, property, uh, point.
Well, it's the, uh.
It's the remediation of the, uh, of that, it used to be a gas station at one time, it's now, it's a little story.
Yeah, Jared, tray stoolers.
Yes.
And Mr. Bott, I'm assuming you have to copy the remediates for tray stoolers?
I thought he emailed it to you. There's two of them, I think, there.
That's all right, Joyce always gets the toys. And again, this is a new, new requirement, uh, two years ago, three years ago, that all environmental permits need to be copied to the local planning board. There's no access to it required from us, they just want to let, let someone know in town. Uh, the environmental commission was always, uh, a requirement to be notified, not all, not all towns have environmental commissions. So that's why they started asking the planning board, so they know that people are aware of this environmental remediation.
Should this kind of stuff be noted somehow, so that Keith, or Joyce, when we open up their tax bill, or so that it's on there, or it's not? Because people, anybody purchasing it would, would show up anyway, correct, like we were saying?
I'm sure, on the search.
These things, one, it would show up on like a, like a list of.
If, if it's restricted, uh, but anybody doing, you know, property purchase should be looking on the D and D.
Just not us, just not us.
Yeah, they should be looking on the DEP websites, finding out if there's areas of concern.
See if it's on.
That's their, that's a private property's due diligence, well, probably, private entities' due diligence, nothing that the borough or this will.
So I'll go back to old business for just a moment, Mr. Bott, um, how are we gonna get at the sidewalks that we were talking about with PSCNG, about taking care of the sidewalk where there were none?
I was at that meeting today.
Did you go to the meeting, did you hear your report?
Uh, so there was a meeting today, uh, in, uh, Camden County, hosted a meeting where they invited, uh, economy closer township in Magnolia, because paving will begin from the, on Yvesham Road, for when, when they stop them in Maple Shade, it'll continue all the way to Schubert, and the intersection of Schubert will be done. Uh, the PSCNG, uh, slash county, uh, uh, project that we had gotten the agreement for the sidewalk has been held up a little bit because there's been a problem with, um, where the, um, uh, what do they call it, the barricades that they were changing?
Guide rails.
Guide rails, so the guide rail, because they're relocating the guide rails, has caused all kinds of problems and change orders. It will get done, they just ran into some issues. Um, so they intend to put more curbs in along, anywhere there's missing curbs on Yvesham Road will get replaced. Um, they, they will not do any sidewalk, or like, the older township may do a little bit, um, because there's an idea of putting a couple crosswalks for the kids, pedestrians across from the running side for the foster township side for when they, they leave from school. Um, what else was talked about?
Well.
The, the ramps, uh, they have to meet the new standards, so they're gonna pour a couple new coat.
Well, they're gonna bump out, the county's gonna bump out the curb line and the guide rail.
That's the original project, it, well, what I went to today was just this repaving project that's starting in the, in the, in the summer. But they brought it up only because they said it's still open.
It's all tied together, right, so for ours, they will eventually be bumping out the guide rails and the curb lines, so the sidewalk can be installed. Sidewalk's gonna be installed by PSCNG.
What's the timeline for that?
No timeline.
They said by bumping it out, they bump out now is causing problems with the utilities underground, that covert that's underground.
Do you concur with that?
They got a problem with that.
They didn't say they weren't gonna do it.
They didn't say they weren't gonna do it.
Yeah, they're just saying they're working through the details.
But I mean, do you concur?
Consulting engineers is involved in it.
See, yes, is the, the engineer for the county.
Well, are they talking to you at the talk about?
That's just, they haven't said at all, that they're not gonna comply with the conditions, so either the county or that, so, um, I'll converse, Mark Bisher went to the meeting.
Yeah, I'm just saying, can we, can we, like, just at least touch base with them, because.
PSCNG can't do anything until the county finishes their, their part, they have to put the railing in and the curb in, so PSCNG can't do the sidewalk.
I'm pretty sure, I, I'm pretty sure the county was gonna want to get that curb line and that guide rail done before they repaint.
Yes.
So, I think it's all tied together.
I'm just saying, here we go, another, another school year passed where the kids are walking in the street, the kids don't have a sidewalk to walk on, that's my concern.
Well, that was kind of a tri-party agreement between Candy County doing their part, PSCNG can do, only do their part after Candy County does their part, and we have the one end left, which is.
The borough has to pay for what they do with money.
Yeah, exactly.
I just have to receive data from your office in a year about this.
We haven't received any new information except for what happened at this meeting.
Will a letter help?
No, cause I know they're, I know they're talking rescinding what's going on, and it's just them implementing, which takes time.
Well, as long, as long as you think they're on point, and they're not rescinding, that's fine, I understand, it's, it's a slow rolling ball, but I just, I, I go by there often, and I'm saying to myself, what the heck, what the heck, it looks, it seems it did a year ago, what the heck, it hasn't changed, and we said we're gonna get this done. I just feel personal about getting it done with the kids.
Right, and it's getting done as part of the PSCNG application, but.
Right.
Is, PSCNG can't do it unless the county does their work, so we're all waiting on the county, and that's their implementation.
So the guide rail contract hasn't been closed out yet, that's what the issue is, if you notice, there's no new guide rail.
Right.
The new guide rail's on the other side. But one last thing about this road project, it's, uh, Harry was representing us from Public Works, that sewer manhole cover at the corner of Yvesham and Schubert is collapsing. So more likely, the borough's gonna have to incur that cost to replace that, um, that whole concrete, what's it called?
Probably the top, the top section of the manhole.
The whole thing, no, the whole thing.
The old manhole.
Yeah, that whole piece of concrete has to be replaced. So they're gonna do the design work, there was a, uh, there was a discussion today about stormwater runoff, they felt that maybe some of the problems with that property, where the guardrail, where the sidewalk's supposed to go, is caused by all the water coming down, that the pipe's not big enough, and, and causing erosion to happen there, and that could be part of the problem. There was a discussion about possibly changing the pipe from that. There was some discussion about possibly changing the pipe from that inlet all the way up to Royal Terrace, but, but the conversation we had was, is there was very, we don't have much flooding on Eve Shan Road, so neither Magnolia Closter Township or Runnymede said that we have flooding.
Right.
But I think it was C E C trying to get a half a million dollar change order to change, put a pipe in there, so damage to your people.
Not a lot.
But they did say the mat didn't work, and I believe that the mat didn't work.
The mat might not work, but everything runs down through pretty much the street there anyway, so if it doesn't go into the pipe, it still gets the...
It's still going down, yeah.
Right.
So again, against new business or market for, as you guys all know, we're in the infancy of our redevelopment, and we don't want to get involved in too many of the intricacies tonight, but we are trying to get some stuff underway to redevelop the Black Forest Pike, and Mr. Bach and his associates have done a lot of work, and the borough's done a lot of work to get this approved through the state, through the abatements and whatnot. So at some point in time in the future, we're going to promptly, and Mayor, I'll defer to you, we're going to probably have another little sit-down about trying to do a better job of letting the property owners know what's going on, because I personally talked to a couple of property owners, you know, as friends, I, I hire back, I just, you know, where they've gotten phone calls from a redeveloper offering to buy their building, but they dismiss it because they don't know it's serious. They don't know that it really is a thing. They just think it's somebody calling them, you know, just trying to steal their property. And I said, "That was the thing." You know, we went through a lot of work to try to, to make this happen, to fill the buildings in town, and some way, somehow, Mayor and I want to get together and try to make an appropriate outreach to the business owners in the town, and especially, I mean, they're the, I think they're the first ones.
Could we do it in the business town hall?
Yes, that's what we're thinking. We, we don't, see, we in no way want to condone or endorse any redevelopers, because that's not what our position is. You know, you know, we are just here to try to facilitate, but we have to do something to let these property owners know that this isn't some road person calling them, looking to kind of like steal their property for no money. They need to know that, you know, by and large, these redevelopers often offer quite a bit more money than what the, what the properties are valued at, because they have an ultimate use for those properties. So we got to do a better job. I got to do a better job somehow, letting the business people know, because they don't know, and they're hanging the phone up, they're throwing letters in the trash, and, you know, we did a lot of work trying to get this approved for this rectangle in Runnymede to become a better rectangle in Runnymede. So we're working on that. That's all I can tell you at this point. We don't have anything set in stone, but Nick and I talked Monday night, and Steve and I talked through the morning, and, you know, we want to get something together. We have a young lady, and did you get a chance to reach out?
Steve and I talked about possibly bringing in someone to help us in the marketing aspect of this, to communicate better. I will also say the same thing. I've had people reach out to me that were interested in, along the Black Forest Pike, and the business owners literally not even talking to them. I don't understand why. I mean, if somebody knocked on my door and wanted to discuss my property, I would discuss it. So we have to figure out how to overcome this skepticism that people have.
I believe...
But we're going to do this in a redevelopment meeting.
The redevelopment committee.
We'd really smash it out, because this is not the format, because once again, this, this room here is where we're going to actually approve things.
Right.
So in our committee, we will set parameters, we'll set ideas, we'll come up with those kinds of things. And, and the budget, John's on finance, one of the things we talked about is a little bit of money. It's going to take money to do some of these things, to promote this stuff. So part of our planning board budget will have, well, we call it the planning board budget, but it's...
It won't be the planning board.
Wouldn't be the planning board, but it's...
It'd be implied to the planning.
It's a line that I know.
My salary.
A separate thing outside of the planning board.
It's a line to, to maybe do some stuff. But I want to say again, it's amazing. I literally have gone and knocked on, I had to knock on people's doors and talk to them. And I, and once again, it puts me in a very awkward position to do things like that. So we're trying to figure that out a little bit differently.
You have, you have a lot to say. You don't, you know...
I know what to say, but I want to try not to get the, I don't want to get the town in trouble.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you can't say...
Well, you, you as a governing body, and even as the redevelopment committee, that's the, you can do that, because you're trying to get reimbursement in the town. I just want to be very careful that there has to be a separate separation between planning zoning board and, and that business development aspect.
Well, everybody knows that we're trying.
You're quasi-traditional, you're, you could really put yourself, you could sort of get yourself accused, you know, and...
So we don't want to do that, okay?
Okay. So Reimagine Runnymede is actually working on an initiative that might be able to help you back with that, because we've noticed that, you know, seen a need for the business community to begin to talk one to another. So we started by circulating a letter as an outreach to the business community with the idea to invite them to, like, a breakfast that would be a business summit that would help them to discuss some ideas, like actually a marketing plan for the Black Forest Pike itself, that was kind of coming from the business community, sharing resources to promote the town. So if we go, and I think we will go forward with that, so that might be a forum that...
Maybe I would speak, perhaps, the Howard Williams Building. I don't want anybody to be intimidated by coming into the courtroom and feeling the wrong, the wrong setting.
We're actually thinking, yeah, so it...
We can just do Howard Williams, or...
Yeah, so...
Or you know, upstairs at Philly Diner or something?
Yeah, someplace that...
Same time.
Yeah.
We can get pizza cheap from Philly Diner.
So some of the people that we've spoken to, we asked them specifically, like, time of day, when would it work out? And some of the responses we were getting back would be, like, a breakfast for the business community. That might be a time you could get them, you know, before their day starts and have a chance to talk.
Absolutely. Well, I, I, that's, that's a very good start, and I would make every attempt to be there, you know, just try to, you know, you know, but we, we need to start somewhere, and I, I think like anything else, like, once you get the first dollar going, I really think it's like anything else, you know, once somebody sees, hey, you know, I, I did quite well with my property, you know what I mean? And we have a lot of properties, thinking, I'm speaking of Monday night, there's some, like, you know, with the way things are, and the digital and, and the e-commerce, you don't even need a building anymore, a big building, to run a business. You need someone pretty smart, you know, behind a, you know, a keyboard to, to run the nuts and bolts of the business, and then, you know, dispatch or, or whatever. The days of needing, you know, a big building, have all these people come into and report and get their assignments, those days are over, you know? So, I mean, there's, there's, there's some bricks and mortar buildings that could really benefit from selling their property and, and then get a better return on the revenue to, to do something else, to then sell the bricks and mortar and then have the developer plan and do something else. So it's, it's not going to be tomorrow, it's not going to be the next day. It's going to take a long time, but, you know, I just want everybody to know that we, we really are trying, and that's a great idea, and please give me a price on everything. Thank you. All right, so at this point, Dave, there's no more? Yes, also, yeah.
I just got a real quick thing, it's just going to take a minute or so. I, I heard a broadcast today on PBS, and I think you might be the only one that was on the board when we started approving the cell phone towers, the people coming up. And I had some concerns about the electromagnetic fields and radiation and all that, and one of the reps from, I don't know if it was...
Orison.
Had said they don't even let their children talk on the phone unless they have, like, Bluetooth or something. Anyway, this is Bert Wolf, it was this afternoon, they're going to repeat it tonight at 10:00 PM, and the gist of it was that they pulled all funding from any kind of testing. So nobody in the government is testing what the effects of these things are. They had one scene where they had the high-power lines, and they sunk fluorescent lights into the ground, and at night they were glowing, it was just picking up radiation from these things. So anyway, you know, we have, these towers are full now, you know what I mean? We have more than one tower. I don't know what we could possibly do about anything, because once they're in there, just for your own edification, if you want to watch this, it's on 10:00 PM tonight, it's on channel thirty-nine, which is a PBS, it's two sixty-six on Comcast, if you want to set your DVR. I found it very interesting, because they brought up a lot of the concerns that I had at the time, and nobody seemed to know. There, there haven't done any studies in at least thirty years on this. So they're, they're telling people now, you know, other countries are doing some studies, and they're saying there's definitely connection between this...
Like brain answers.
Not to put your phone in your pocket and all that stuff.
Oh, boy.
You know, and they're, and they're recommending that people don't live within three hundred meters of these towers and that kind of stuff. So if you want to watch it, it's, it's not a, a real long piece, but it's, I think it's interesting.